It's six o'clock and we will commence the October 17th meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission and we'll start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Niemann?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Banjo?
Here.
Commissioner McHaver?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I would ask the director, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight that we're not aware of?
Yes, thank you Chair Morris, there are a couple of supplementals and there's a couple of requests for continuance. There is a supplemental for E5 in the Manila envelope that was just given to you tonight. Item E6, we're requesting a continuance of due to a site inspection today that resulted in the discovery of some violations, so we were asking that be continued to a date uncertain. So that needs to be pulled off consent calendar in order to do that. Item H1 is a public hearing item, we're also bringing forward a request by the applicant to continue that to a date uncertain. There is a supplemental item for item H2, the hemp ordinance, and then you received an email from a member of the public expressing some concern. This concern was expressed at the zoning administrator meeting of September 19th, 2019. And so there are, all of the items that were taken off the zoning administrator item are on the planning commission agenda tonight for the planning commission to hold a public hearing on and make a determination whether or not, A, they can be approved as part of a public hearing, and B, there is language in each one of those identifying whether or not it was appropriate for the zoning administrator to have taken action on those. Those are currently on consent calendar unless they're removed.
Thank you. At this time, I will take public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Anyone wishing to speak on non-agendized items may approach the podium at this time, and since it is a lengthy agenda we have, I would ask that you confine your comments to three minutes, please. Go ahead.
I could be wrong, but one of the ones the administrator, zoning administrator was going to do, it had to be a small permit, and lo and behold, somebody asked for a hearing and now all of a sudden you found violations out there. How many of those exact things have gone through without you guys knowing what's going on? So you did receive a letter from, I believe, Robert Sutherland. I don't know if you've had time to read that. Robert was a founder of Epic, and I have a portion of that letter, my computer only printed out a little bit of it. It says, "Objection to cultivation permits." Humboldt County bleeding for immediate attention colleagues. We object to your practice of approving marijuana cultivation permits in spotted owl habitat. The rationale for these approval incorporates two general approaches, a reliance on mitigations, and assumptions that other agencies will raise objections when there is concern. Neither of these, in fact, operate to ensure that spotted owl will not continue its slide towards extinction. You are cumulatively allowing take of this species, and I believe you should lose your permitting authority if you do not take immediate steps to rectify your practices. We have previously raised these concerns to the zoning administrator and its response itself has been apparent violation of the law, voted at the end of this letter, and I don't have the violation part, you guys have that, you can read that on your own. In its review of such permits, your planning requirements begins with a profoundly flawed assumption, which is ignore past owl habitat damage of pre-existing grows and continue with occupation of the site. This infers that habitat no longer exists and/or will not be further impacted by continuation of the site, which with its inevitable follow-on extensions such as increased traffic and increased noise, these sites should not be allowed in spotted owl territories irrespective of whether they are pre-existing. The acceptance of pre-existing sites concurrently makes a dead ladder of California planning laws. You cannot take extensive California forest lands, spread industrial sites willingly through them and call it planning, but that is exactly what is being done, we object. And it goes on about some other things, including possible intimidation of some of your people representing who take care of this thing, fish and wildlife people, by your director. I take these accusations seriously. Mr. Sutherland is a person that I've found to be credible and quite accurate, and he's a person who knows litigation. I'm a member of HUMMAP, and so I'm only speaking as a member of HUMMAP, not representing HUMMAP, but I'm the pocket of HUMMAP. In prior litigation that we had before you, we had a settlement. In my opinion, the settlement has been violated, and so that's probably grounds for that settlement to be addressed through court again. We don't want to have to go there, and again, I'm not speaking for the organization, I'm speaking for myself, I'm willing to fund what it takes to put this right, take care of our environment, quit going willy-nilly through the process, and allowing things to be permitted out there that have major impact upon our environment. I'm here for Mother Nature, and she has access to my pocket.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening Commissioners, Staff, Tara Carver, Executive Director of the Humboldt County Growers Alliance. We had a few members who were in the zoning clearance hearing, and to their recollection of that meeting, it was discussed that a biologist, a biologist had spoken to HUMMAP and had requested that HUMMAP go and poll those projects, and that's who you have before you are these projects tonight. It is absolutely inappropriate for any government biologist to be speaking to a litigious environmental group and polling projects. They need to go through the same public process and present their comments as every other project, if it wasn't cannabis, that is done and the way they weigh in, so just like that to be on the record tonight. Thank you.
Thank you Speaker. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. I'm speaking with Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. We wanted to speak on the zoning parcels inside McKinleville in regards to the locations between Anna Sparks and Murray, which we think should be zoned as mixed use one, in an effort to improve the pedestrian-oriented mixed use to align with the future development of the town center that is supposed to exist there. Since the mixed-use land designation is consistent-
Excuse me, isn't that an agenda item?
I apologize.
It actually is an agenda item, and as I heard the gentleman begin to speak, we're actually asking for a continuance to a date uncertain on that.
Okay, so if we're going to ask for a date uncertain, you did show up, I'll let you continue, but it was an agendized item-
I apologize.
And this is for agendized, non-agendized, but since you started and since we're going to ask for continuation, you may continue.
Yeah, so since the mixed-use land designation is consistent with the C1 and C2 zoning, there wouldn't be any changes to the uses that already exist there, and I believe that this would be the best way to implement the general plan, since the goals and policies around the pedestrian-oriented town centers won't be accomplished without a bigger area zoned as mixed use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on non-agendized items? Seeing no one, we'll close this section of public comment and we'll bring it back to the balance of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, section E, and the first item is the Headwaters Organics LLC, and it is a application in the Greenwood Heights area. Is there anyone in the audience or any of the commissioners going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation and would like to have this pulled for a full public hearing? Anyone? Seeing no one, we will leave that on the consent. Next item is the Rolling Fog LLC special permit in the Weah area. Is there anyone in the audience or any of the commissioners would like to have this pulled for a full public hearing and are going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation? Seeing no one, we'll leave that on the consent. The next item is the Dome Side Gardens LLC in the Thomas Road Myers Flat area. Is there anyone in the audience going to speak in opposition to staff recommendations, or do any of the commissioners want this pulled for a full public hearing? Seeing a hand, it will be a public hearing. Next item is the Skyline Farms LLC special permit, a lot line adjustment in the Seeley Creek area of Redway. Is there anyone in the audience going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation, or do any of the commissioners want this pulled for a full public hearing? Seeing no one, that'll be on the consent, remain on the consent. The next item is the Sawtooth Ridge LLC special permit in the Redcap Road Orleans area. Is there anyone in the audience going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation, or do any of the commissioners want this pulled for a full public hearing? Seeing a hand, that will be a full public hearing. The next item, Danny King Conditional Use Permit, staff has requested a continuance, so we will probably take a separate vote on that, and so that will not be on the consent, and we'll vote on it after the fact here. Next item is the Jason Miller Conditional Use Permit in the Dinsmore area, and that is also for a continuance. Is there anyone who's traveled here a considerable distance and may not be able to come back on a continued date that needs to, would like to speak on this tonight? Anyone? Seeing no one, that will remain on the consent. The next item is the Parnell Kaiser Michelle Walker CUP in the Meto Road Honeydew area. Is there anyone in the audience going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation on that, or do any of the commissioners want this pulled for a full public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll leave that on the consent. And the next item is the MMF Management LLC Conditional Use Permit in the East Branch Road Garberville area. Is there anyone in the audience going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation, or do any of the commissioners want this pulled for a full public hearing? Seeing no one, that will remain on the consent. And I think that's it. So on the consent, based on my notes here, we have item E1, which is the Headwaters Organics LLC. We have item E2, Rolling Fog Special Use Permit. We have the E4, Skyline Farms LLC in the Redway area. We have item E7, Jason Miller Conditional Use Permit, which is for a continuance. We have the Parnell Kaiser Michelle Walker Conditional Use Permit in the Meto area. And we have item E9, which is the MMF Management LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area, and those are the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve items E1, E2, E4, E7, E8, and E9 on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda is unanimously approved. And with that, we will move along to, I want to, yeah, I want to do, I can move along to E6, which is the Danny King Conditional Use Permit in the Colorado area. Staff has requested a continuance to a date uncertain, and so I would like to see if we could address that next. May I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to continue to a date uncertain for E6, Danny King.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Matters continue to a date uncertain. And that brings us back to the item E3, which is the Dome Side Gardens LLC in the Thomas Road Myers Flat area of Humboldt. So if we could get a report from the staff, I'd appreciate that.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Megan Ryan, a senior planner, and I am the assigned planner for this project. Tonight before you is the Dome Side Gardens LLC special permits. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow continued cultivation of 9,700 square feet of cannabis cultivation, consisting of 8,100 square feet of outdoor and 1,600 square feet of mixed light. The project includes relocation of approximately 2,900 square feet of outdoor cultivation out of streamside management area. Processing is, will occur onsite in a proposed 1,500 square foot facility, and five employees are needed during peak operations. Processing may also occur offsite. Power, in conversation with the applicant this week, the, which may be a change from what you see in your staff report, is power is provided by solar with generators for backup use, and that is including the fans that would be in any light deprivation greenhouses. The project also includes special permits for a point of diversion, the restoration in the SMA, and a setback from public lands owned by the Bureau of Land Management to the north. The project is located in the Salmon Creek area, the access is via Thomas Road. The red icon is where the community school is located, it's approximately 3.6 miles to the project site. One of the comments staff received from the Bureau of Land Management was clarification if access to the site was taken through their parcel and it comes from the south and not from the north through their parcel, it did place a label on the BLM property. Here is a, just looking at the site plan that was included in the staff report, showing the 2,900 square feet of outdoor in the upper left to be relocated, and there is also a 60,000 gallon pond that the Department of Fish and Game has asked to be restored, that is included in the final stream bed alteration agreement with the department to restore the pond. Part of the project tonight is requesting a point of diversion to allow for diversion into storage tanks to replace the water that was previously stored in this pond. They also, in the southeast corner, you'll see an 80,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond that provides the majority of the water for irrigation use. Annual water use is approximately 100,009 gallons, and that's approximately 11 gallons per square foot. Water storage is mainly in the pond in the southeast portion of the property, and they will add six hard-sided tanks to replace the other pond to be restored, that will meet the forbearance requirements for the operation. As I stated, there is a special permit to allow for the point of diversion for irrigation use and for the restoration of the pond. The applicant has worked with CDFW to obtain an agreement for both of those activities, and the conditions of approval require obtaining appropriative water rights and adhering to terms and conditions associated with those rights. According to the natural, California Natural Diversity Database, there are no map species on the subject parcel. The nearest activity center was 1.30 miles southeast of the project site, and the nearest map rearlet habitat is 0.50 miles north of the project site. Noise and light attenuation measures have been added as a part of the project approval. One of the concerns that the BLM brought forward, this project was previously noticed at the zoning administrator in June and came back again in September, and in June, they were concerned, the BLM voiced concern about rodenticides, it is included in Attachment 5, I believe, in their packets. The applicants stated they do not use rodenticides in their operation, and a condition of approval was added to ensure that for the life of the project, rodenticides won't be used, and there is no archaeological or historic resources were identified onsite. The project includes a setback reduction request from the BLM land, so I wanted to include a slide showing the northernmost, where the northernmost greenhouse is located, it's approximately 425 feet south of the property line. In your packet, I included correspondence between me and the BLM, trying to, attempting to address their concerns regarding noise and light associated with the operation, rodenticides, and the access road. In conversation with the applicant this week, the applicant has applied with a state for outdoor cultivation and will be using light deprivation in all of the greenhouses, although the request for the mixed light is still a part of what they're asking for, their cultivation method will be primarily outdoor with only artificial lighting occurring in the nursery with a string of lights. And as brought forward earlier in tonight's hearing, the, this project was one of the projects that was scheduled for the zoning administrator hearing on September 19th. There were concerns voiced that related to the process, and no project-specific concerns were raised at that time. There is discussion that was included in your executive, in the executive summary and the staff report regarding the hearing, and also, so a part of the, of discussion tonight, we're asking the commission to consider if non-controversial special permits can be heard by the zoning administrator and if that's the appropriate hearing officer. For this particular project, the parcels, you know, parcels within 300 feet of the property line were noticed, and the haul route was noticed for the third time. The first time I got one other public comment, an applicant has said that they addressed the issues with the mixed light that the commenter brought forward. I did not receive any calls in September or for this hearing from public members. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? The commissioners for staff report for clarifications at this stage? Seeing none, we'll open us up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please approach the podium at this time.
Again, not speaking for HUMMAP, and I'd like to say, HUMMAP, I think, has only been involved in one litigation I can think of. That doesn't fit the definition of litigious, does it? Prevailed, entered in a settlement, and did some really good for the environment. And that's why I'm here, that's why I wish to pull this particular project. As you've noticed, pointed out by staff, there were things that actually aren't as you see here and aren't as the plans, and things seem to be changing as we speak. That's part of the reason why maybe your eyeballs and the eyeballs of the public are necessary on more of these smaller projects that move through. I'm not aware of the zoning administrator ever turning down a project, some of which you have turned down. He's probably made changes when he's had complaints during the hearings, but it doesn't seem to happen. So my concern on this is a question, which you should be asking on the other one, which I didn't pull, somebody else pulled, is there's a special permit to reduce a 600-foot setback from adjacent public lands owned by the Bureau of Land Management. It was mentioned that they made a comment, but have they basically gone ahead and sent a letter to you folks saying, "It is okay with us to go ahead and reduce that"? Any of these should have a letter in the file which shows that they've had the time and taken the time to assess the situation. You guys are just overloading all of these agencies with all of these bundles of permits going through, and I think a lot of things are sliding between what should be happening and what is happening. The question, of course, we have here, you saw how close this is to other kind of endangered species, short, relatively short distances, and so the concern that, again, was expressed by HUMMAP, is this actually an area that was habitat, and these because of illegal uses before that you're now permitting and precluding the animals from coming back into the habitat where they were? So you're basically, if that is true on these and the assessment hasn't been, you're going ahead and say, "Well, you did an illegal thing, you chased them off, now they're not a problem anymore because they're gone, but Mother Nature says they belong back there, and now you're circumventing the process." That's a lot of the objection that I have, and I think you'll find a lot of other people have, who like to protect the environment and like to see that habitat is restored when it was illegally removed by illegal activities. That's the problem we have with the rubber stamping that is done quite frequently, and I asked that you get those letters in your file, and the comment made before by a speaker after me, of course, leads me to believe somebody has some inside information on something maybe they shouldn't have, and I don't know if it came from our director or not, but depositions will prove that out.
Thank you Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Thomas Mulder, CEO, Humboldt Redwood Healing. I'm just speaking in regards to endangered habitats and stuff like that. I think with a lot of the things that the director and the planning department put in to mitigate those efforts, I don't think that's an issue. If people put forward mitigated efforts and stipulations in a permit to protect endangered species, to do all these other types of things, I feel that as long as you guys with the county approve the project and make sure they go through those mitigating measures, you should approve, it should be fine. I mean, you could look back at an email from DFW on a project I have on TPZ, there's, I think, seven tenths of a mile spotted owl habitat that hasn't been documented since early 2000s. They asked for an owl study to make sure generator use was down to a certain decibel level, and if people follow those mitigation measures, you aren't affecting even, I would like to get ahold of that email to show you what DFW said for my project. They specifically said, "As long as the mitigation factors are used, it's not going to negatively impact the spotted owls." So just take that into consideration. I just walked in, I saw the letter, I think it's really coming after you in a harsh way. I think the county is doing a good job on these projects, putting in measures to protect the county, protect the environment, and let's have people move forward. Thank you.
Thank you Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Plan Commission, my name is Stephen Liu, I'm agent for the, this particular applicant. I wanted to make a quick clarification in that the applicant submitted for mixed light, it was a, the property was purchased last year, and they're actually electing to remove the existing high-intensity lights from the greenhouses. Megan had mentioned that they're switching entirely to deprivation only. I do want to make a quick clarification that there will be string lights during parts of the year in the mixed light greenhouses, so they are, we are keeping the mixed light designation, there will be lights, but it'll be much less intensive use. Also wanted to clarify, there's, you know, there's a lot of concerns about pre-existing habitat, and that was brought up by the first speaker, but we're looking at this, and everything we're doing for this particular project is to reduce the impact. We are taking care of a pond that Department of Fish and Wildlife considered, you know, had some concerns with. We are reducing the intensity of the light usage on the project, and, you know, coming in and becoming compliant, and we're reducing the baseline impact compared to what the condition was prior to the passing of the ordinance, so I'd like to bring those points up.
Thank you Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment, please approach the podium? Anyone?
I'd like to ask about this, you know, we have a regulation that has said-
Well, hang on here, we're in the public comment section here.
Oh, I thought you said anybody else after we were done.
We're, we can get into a discussion, but we're not public comment. Anyone else in public comment? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close this section of the public comment and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, and go right ahead.
So I have an issue with the fact that we have these 600-foot setbacks. It was in the ordinance, not everyone agreed with the ordinance, but there were certain protections in there, and that was one of them, and it seems like over and over again, we're being asked- And it seems like over and over again, we're being asked to just waive them, and I don't really understand on a parcel this size, why we need to waive the 600-foot setback.
Well, one of the important things, I think, that we consider in reviewing these existing cannabis sites is the baseline impact. And oftentimes, while they may, the parcel may be big enough to relocate away and meet that 600-foot setback, that might require additional ground disturbance or habitat removal. And so if we believe through an analysis of the project and the information that's been submitted, that they can meet the requirements so that they are not impacting the sensitive species that might exist on the public lands, that in most cases, we believe it, it may be more beneficial to the environment to permit what is existing there than to allow for additional disturbance and possible habitat removal.
So if you do that, and then they come back later and say, "Well, now I'd like to expand my operations like we saw last week," then what happens? Seems like those seem to move forward also, though.
Expansion, so expansion would, we would consider to be new cultivation, which there's a much stricter threshold for where that might be permitted. And in most cases, where you're in forest land or existing forest fringes like this, that's probably not going to be a site that would meet the requirements for new cultivation.
Well, this was, the, this was pulled because of a letter by HUMAP, is my understanding, and that's why the zoning administrator, I think, referred it to us. And I think, you know, this is probably a good place as any, is to, to make sure that the commissioners are at ease with, with what we've been doing. And I've got quite a few comments, but I will, I might ask the director, since he's a zoning administrator, and he had his reasons and his concerns from referring that to us, if he can put those out, please.
Absolutely, thank you, Chairman Morrison. One of the things I, I want to do is give the commission and the public a little bit of background, is that normally, special permits are reviewed through a process whereby we send out something called a notice of intent to approve. And if nobody responds to that, we just approve those. So that's the normal process for a special permit. We send out what we call a NOIDA, and if nobody comments, we, it's just approved. We don't do that with cannabis. All cannabis applications, except for zoning clearance certificates, all special permits that are for cannabis applications are scheduled for a public hearing with the zoning administrator. So we've already upped the notch. So to say that we just rubber stamp things is really an unfair statement, because we go through the same process, we hold a public hearing, we allow the public to come. One of the things that the zoning administrator had the ability to do, when Mr. Sutherland came and asked that these be reviewed by the planning commission, is to consider what the merits of the arguments were against the projects, and then to decide whether or not to act on them or not. What I decided to do, since he had said two things, one is that we're rubber stamping, which you've heard that accusation granted before, and that we're not paying attention to the CDFW, which I also take offense to, because we work closely with CDFW, is to say, "Okay, we will divert these to the planning commission and allow the planning commission to have a full public hearing," so there's full transparency here. There is not something where the zoning administrator is doing something behind closed doors and rubber stamping things. But, so that the commission now knows and the public knows, is like, what's the level of these kinds of permits that are being reviewed? And so a special permit is intended to be a very minor permit. It is discretionary, but it's intended to be a very, very minor permit. Non-cannabis permits do not have, 90% of those, 95% of those do not have public hearings. All cannabis applications do. Okay?
I assume the commissioners have had a chance to, to look at this letter, because basically what this letter is asking us to do is to not approve in a manner we've been doing. And I think what we've done to date has been under the guidance and the advice of county council, and it's also been done with the, as far as I know, full compliance with California environmental rules and regulations.
So I would repeat that what you've just said is that's entirely true. And one of the really critical things to consider here, and Mr. Johnson mentioned this earlier, is that a lot of these, the only time that cultivation is allowed in timberland environments, which is where northern spotted owl would be located, is when there are existing cultivation sites. So, under the California Environmental Quality Act, you have something called baseline. Baseline is what currently exists. When you conduct an environmental analysis, you compare the proposed impacts of a project in relationship to what exists. In the case of these existing cultivation sites, the existing cultivation site exists, so that's what you're comparing it to. And so to say that there's these environmental impacts that go back to before the cultivation was there is like, I mean, it's important to recognize, CEQA doesn't require that we go back to the 1830s to evaluate what the environment was like then and to determine the impact that civilization has had on the environment since then. Maybe that's a little too much, but I, I did say that for effect, is, is that we really do evaluate based upon what was existing and what the proposal is, and we try very diligently to identify if there's additional impacts from what they're proposing to do, and then we also work with CDFW to determine if there's sensitive habitat in close proximity, and then work to mitigate the ongoing use of that in proximity to that northern spotted owl habitat. The typical conditions that the zoning administrator and the commission apply are to observe the noise mitigation measures that are included within the ordinance, which is to maintain a decibel level of not more than 50 decibels at the edge of the habitat or 100 feet from the source. And so that often involves, if it's a generator, it involves housing that. If it's fans, it involves using fans that don't have that kind of noise generation. And obviously, the, the lighting is the other concern. Those have to comply with dark sky standards.
I think from a, as, as I read the letter, a couple of things that kind of struck me is, because the author of the letter, I've known him for years, and he is a very, very indefatigable defender of the environment, and I do, I do respect that, and I respect a lot of, of what he has accomplished, and I, I read this letter several times. I've got my item, my letter here marked up quite a bit. And the gist of what I get from this letter is that we, that if you took the author's letter and carried it full term, you're starting down a real dangerous slippery slope. Because in this case, he's talking about existing cannabis operations that, in TPZ. And then on down through the letter, he talks about and discusses, you know, different types of pollution. And I think the director just indicated that we, that we do take care of noise pollution, we do take care of, of light pollution. CDFW, who is, who is tasked with being the responsible state party for enforcing Endangered Species Act rules, laws, and regulations, they are a referral agency. They do get all of the applications referred to them, and we've had them appear before us many times with input, and I'm sure that when they don't appear, they've had the referral and there's probably been some communication with the department. But back to the slippery slope that I see here, is that if you narrow out or single out cannabis cultivation as an activity that you don't want in the NSOs, in the NSO areas, CDFW has taken a look at those. Their referral comments have been addressed. They may or may not have made a site visit, I don't know. And if they have made some recommendations for further protocol changes or studies, I'm assuming that, that all becomes a condition in the application. But what bothers me a little bit is, what about if it's not a cannabis? What about if it's a house permit somebody wants to put on TPC ground? Are, are we now going down that slippery slope of saying, "Well, if you're going to put a house on there and you're going to have a residence there on TPZ, it may not be cannabis-related, are you now subject to doing NSO studies"? I don't know that. But I think this is the slippery slope that we've got to be careful on, is that once you start taking a type of permit and philosophically going down the road where it needs to be treated differently than these other permits, where do you stop? And I don't know the answer to that. I do know that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service were the original entity that set protocol standards, and they set the buffer zones, and they set the requirements about what you do in order to make sure that you're not taking an owl. They seem to have pulled out a couple of years ago, and they turned over their responsibility to the state CDFW, and that is the entity now that, that is tasked with the responsibility of making sure that the endangered species aren't taken and that certain protocols are covered. The fact that, you know, in this, in this letter, there's, there, I think the allegations are in there that the CDFW doesn't have the funds to do this. I'm not sure that that's the responsibility of the county to make sure that CDFW does their tasks as, as necessary. They're notified, they're alerted, they are listened to when they respond, but we can't make them respond. And I think that every time they've had a, a serious concern, I think that as a commission, we've addressed that. I, I know several different applications where we've either modified or denied based on the CDFW concerns. Most of the time, there's modifications, and a lot of them are significant modifications. So it makes me nervous to start predicating permits based on going down this, this, this slope that perhaps the CDFW didn't do and didn't respond in a manner, didn't have the funds to respond when they were properly notified. And I think I, I might like to hear county council's assessment, whether or not council believes that, that what we're doing fulfills the, the language of the law.
From what I understand, all of the, the projects that have gone forward up to this point have been in compliance with all of the applicable environmental rules and regulations.
So you, at this time, you don't have any overriding concerns based on, on the testimony we had tonight and the, the letter we've had before us?
I do not, I do not have any overriding concerns.
Thank you.
Well, I'll, I've also got a few comments to make. I'll start with addressing the, the baseline issue. So the baseline issue was one that was quite problematic to address in terms of already degraded land, as you can imagine. Mendocino struggled with it. It's also difficult for people to understand, and so I like to compare it to the smog test that's required when you have an older vehicle. So you bring that in, you're required to bring it up to a certain threshold or a certain standard. We don't require that it emit the least amount of pollutants, so we don't require, you know, that we bring it up to, for example, Tesla standards. Basically, we're bringing it up to a baseline that's the minimum that we'll accept, something that's the minimum allowable. And it's the same thing we, we, the same approach we took with cannabis and with some other things, not just cannabis, in terms of environmental impact. And so, yeah, I mean, a lot of us biologists would like to see the standard a little higher, right? So maybe that, that could have been done, but it wasn't. But we can all be assured that the baseline, you know, for an already degraded landscape, is the minimum that is required for that area or system to be functional. And functionality is our basic requirement. So I'm satisfied that the baseline has been addressed adequately. Yes, it would be great if the threshold were a little higher, but it is functional. So I'll get back to that in a moment. The next part I'd like to address is, I'll just go through the letter sequentially. It gets a little esoteric. There's a lot on cats. So cats, I, I spend a lot of time lecturing about cats, too. Cats do have an environmental impact, not quite as high as, as some other pets, but they, they, they do have environmental impact. However, there is no evidence that cats are more numerous for cannabis farms than for any other activity or project. So the idea that cats are somehow associated strongly with cannabis farms is arguable. Even if so, we have to look at cats versus rodenticides. So which one has the greater environmental impact? Probably most of us would agree would be rodenticides. There's also quite a bit of evidence that human activities in general increase the number of rodents. And so the idea that somehow there's diminishing supply of rodents is also something that doesn't have any evidence that's alluded to in this letter. The other thing that I would like to point out is that the number one reason that spotted owls are decreasing is indeed from competition with the barred owl. owls are decreasing is indeed from competition with the barred owl. So all biologists are, I do believe everyone's aware of that now. The competition is the main reason that the spotted owls are going down in terms of number. It's not in fact habitat or food supply or light pollution or any of those other things. It's the introduction of the, or the spread of the barred owl. So those are my comments in terms of this, the content of the letter. So I'd like to finish by going back to something that I brought up when I was first appointed to the commission and something that I am perennially disappointed with, which is that we don't have long-term planning on a large geographical scale. If we had a simple plan in terms of geography, and I'm talking about habitat corridors, having overlays, having habitat corridors having a plan, then it wouldn't even matter so much what the activities are for all of the, the projects that come before us. Because we could feel assured that we have habitat corridors where we're not allowing activities for those endangered species in question. And so I would argue that the main thing that we should be requesting from planning and building is to look at developing a plan in terms of having habitat corridors for the species where we can be assured that there is going to be available habitat for the climate warming that we may be experiencing here on the coast. So we know through past history that the species need to move latitudinally. And it's very, very difficult and we're already seeing this up in the north. My brother's a teacher in Nunavut and there have been pretty extreme changes. And if, you can't expect a lot of species to be able to go through cities or development moving latitudinally. I mean, one reason, you know, Europe has fewer species is because they have to go up and over mountain chains. The mountain, mountains run east to west rather than north-south like here. So as soon as you introduce any kind of difficulty, it, it just makes it that much more likely that we're going to have to help out those species or they're not going to be able to move. And so habitat corridors are really, in my opinion, the answer in terms of conserving what we have, in terms of ecosystem functionality, and ensuring that the species that we do have are able to move in terms of environmental change. Thanks.
Mike?
So my comment on this is, one of the reasons why I believe the public approved putting cannabis is lawful is to get rid of sites that are out in the woods that are causing a lot of damage. And in order to do that, they have to come up to certain standards. And that's, that's part of what we have here, which is along the same lines as what Director Ford was talking about, looking at what the baseline is just before this. So I think we're doing the best that can be done. It is planning and I think we're along the right lines.
Any more comments, discussion? Kind of quiet. And I would think that maybe we've all kind of got our mind made up and entertain a motion if there's no further discussion on this.
Well, I'll move that we find that the planning commission has considered the addendum to the mitigated negative declarations adopted for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance pursuant to section 15164 of the state SEQA guidelines, make all the required findings for the approval of the special permits based on evidence in the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the proposed Dome Site Gardens LLC project subject to recommended conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Everyone clear on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes, four to one. And I would, I would hope, Director, that you've heard the, the comments and the discussion of the, the commission and continue, don't bring these zoning clearance ones to us if this is the only overriding issue. But I think we've, we've basically discussed the fact that, you know, where we stand on that. And so if, if this is the only reason to vary from your zoning clearance, please continue in your old historic way.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item was the Sawtooth. Was there a, an addendum on that for a continuance? Wasn't there a, didn't we get some, was that one of the continued items?
Chairman Morris, no, that, that was, I don't believe there was a supplemental on that and that was just one of the consent agendas.
Pardon?
Actually, that's correct. That was the, the Manila, right before the hearing.
Okay.
It was not requested for a continuance.
Okay. It was a different one. Okay. Based on that, we will open this item E5 and I would ask for a staff report, please.
Good evening, honorable members of the commission. My name is Caitlin Castellano. I'm a planner, too. I was the assigned planner for this project. The project before you for your consideration tonight is a request from Sawtooth LLC for a special permit request for an existing 6,700 square foot mixed light cultivation operation that utilizes low wattage lights to obtain up to two harvests using light deprivation methods annually, depending on the weather. They are conditioned to limit the wattage to 0.15 watts per square foot. That is essentially a 15 watt light bulb placed every 10 feet in the hoop houses. The applicant also requests a special permit for a setback reduction to Six Rivers National Forest to approximately 313 feet to the nearest cultivation area. On the right is the location map. It's about five minutes from, I guess you say downtown Orleans. It is accessed via Red Cap Road, which is a category four road and is county maintained. We did receive, we do receive referral responses from the US Forest Service and it's always a recommendation of denial because they state transportation of cannabis across federal lands is illegal as well as cannabis in general being illegal. So the project as proposed and conditioned, excuse me, can be found consistent with the Six Rivers National Forest Land and Resource Management Plan for Protection of Biological Resources. So here's another aerial map. You see the arrows at the bottom. The legal parcel is two APNs. Arrow pointing to the right parcel is where the existing cultivation is. I'd like to point out that where the cultivation is, there's a U-zone with an AG, a general plan designation, the one next door with no cultivation, no disturbance that is TPZ. And the parcel is also proposed to be, oh, I'm sorry, is proposed to be residential AG. It's zoned, I mean, the general plan is residential estates, which does allow intensive and general agricultural uses. Just another look, you know, there is forest service lands dramatically going up the hill. To the right of that, though, that is private lands. You see a private homestead up there in the far right that is, that is a disturbance to the area. And it's close to the, you know, agricultural bottoms near the river. It's about a half a mile going forward straight and then a third of a mile if you cut to So water is provided by the Orleans Community Services District and they have provided a will serve letter for a little less than 200,000 gallons annually, which they consider June through September is their limitation. So the estimated water usage for this operation is 90,000 gallons. That's about 13 gallons a square foot. They have 20,000 available storage, 20,000 more. So they do have 40,000 gallons of water that they can store to use during the forbearance, but really they get CSD water and they can use up to 200,000 gallons. Processing, processing and drying does occur onsite in shipping containers that are approximately, currently 115 feet from the Six Rivers National Forest land at the bottom there. They do propose a new 900 square foot facility right next to the greenhouses, which would increase that setback to the forest lands to over 300 greater than the cultivation area. Power currently is generator. They're small Honda CU. They do have it in a enclosed structure and in your supplemental. The applicant did do some of his own readings. Apparently his enclosure doesn't have any sound dampening in it. It is a condition of approval to dampen that generator until PG&E can be connected. So he is planning on doing that and he is conditioned to do that within two years and beforehand he must mitigate the noise. Also, the site was cleared initially in 1993. Looked like it was, it was expanded slightly in 0509. It did revegetate in some of that area and then there was no conversion since the adoption of the ordinance. So just to talk a little bit about biological resources, habitat protection, tribal culture resources on the adjacent public land, Six Rivers National Forest. So having Community Services District water does decrease impacts to water resources. There's no stream diversion. Connecting to PG&E will allow him to no longer use the generator, which, you know, decreases impacts to northern spotted owl due to light and noise. I should have pointed out before on the other map that the closest northern spotted owl activity center is actually southeast. So if we go, so if we're looking at this map where, where the disturbed area is up at the top, on the other side of that is where the mapped northern spotted owl center is. They have implemented their water resource protection plan. There is a grading plan, though, to strengthen some rolling dips. It meets the stream side management area setbacks. So there, if you look on the right, actually the, the, it does meet, it's greater than 50 feet, it's almost to 100. There was a biological report done, their recommendations. They stated that the existing was minimal. The proposed development, which would be installing more water storage, putting the PG&E in as well as the processing facility, could have impact on biological resources. So they recommended avoiding construction during the breeding season, which is February 1st to September 1st. And if that's not possible, doing pre-construction surveys. They also recommended not to apply pesticide during, when the winds are low and as well as implementing a site management plan, which that is a condition of approval already required for your state license under the State Water Resource Control Board. I also did not put on here, but wanted to point out that all of CDFW's requests are conditions of approval, you know, following the dark sky standards. Enclosing the generators, so the combined noise is 100, is 50 decibels at 100 feet. Prohibiting rodenticides, not using the nylon or the plastic netting. And lastly, the Karuk tribe did approve this site. They did state that the operation was within 600 feet of a tribal culture resource, but they, they said that if the, he initially had a pond that he had proposed, 100,000 gallon pond. And so they said if he removed the pond, then they would reduce the setback and allow the site. So that's what he did. And so the Karuk tribe has approved the site. Again, you had the discussion previously of why this project was brought to the planning commission, so I guess I won't repeat that. And so staff's recommendation is to find the project consistent with the adopted mitigated negative declaration, make all the required findings for approval for the special permit and adopt the resolution approving the special permits subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for clarifications on staff report?
I have one. You say in there that the Karuk tribe approved it. Do you have a letter from them approving it or did you communicate?
I do. Mm-hmm. We have it in writing. It's confidential, so we don't include those in the staff report packets, but they, I can read it. Do you want me to read it to you? Excuse me, I was sick this week. It's going around. No. Do I not have it in here? Oh, no. It's in my email and it's not in the confidential folder. I could go on, on the J drive and pull it up. It's on the J drive.
Any other questions on staff report that need clarification?
Just one small one. On the sound requirements about the container, that is required to be soundproof before this is approved. Is that correct, Director?
That should be a condition of the operating and let me say in short, yes, and I'll verify that the condition says that.
Well, it looks like it might be a little lengthy process to find that letter.
Thank you.
Do you have it?
And I'd like to clarify that I do speak with their Earl Crosby a lot. I coordinate with them a lot on all the projects and so he's definitely said that, you know, as long as the pond wasn't in, that they're okay with the project.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, Director.
I would just call out in response to Commissioner Newman's question, the condition is, item is number B1, ongoing conditions. And basically, it is a condition that is effective immediately and is a performance standard that is in place from now or project approval until the PG&E is connected.
Any more questions for staff before we go to the public? Seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the project, please approach podium at this time.
Sitting by the applicant, I had a good chance to get a lot of my questions answered and one of the biggest ones was the Karuk, if they'd actually gone through and approved it. That means something to me. That's something when the tribes approve something that says because they look after a lot of the environmental issues themselves. So a lot of times I defer to them, it's their world. I did wish to make a comment. Just because the protectors of the environment don't make comments does not morally release you folks from doing the same things that you know are right. If you know these are the right protections biologically, if you know these things should happen, my question is, have you ever had a, the marolets or the spotted owls come back to one of these sites once you've gone ahead and mitigated your things? If you have, then you're doing something right. If you haven't, you're not. It's not working, plain and simple. I, I strongly applaud PG&E being the power source here. I strongly applaud all those things. Seems to be closer to civilization and, and I don't have as much angst, especially with the tribe approving that. But I will continue to have angst- I strongly applaud all those things. Seems to be closer to civilization. And I don't have as much angst, especially with the tribe approving that. But I will continue to have angst if you think you're morally released from not doing the job. When you guys, some of you have the expertise, you've dealt with the CDFW, you know what's right and fair out there. And just to say that they didn't get a hold of us and make comments, that's not forgivable in my viewpoint. I hate to sanction and admonish in that way, but sometimes I call a spade a spade. This particular project, I don't have problems with. Thank you for my opportunity to express a little bit of my angst with the process here. And again, these things are brought forward to you, and this project seems far superior to the one I made comment on before. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Hello, good evening. Pete Caffarata, and I'm the owner of Sawtooth Ridge LLC. And I just want to say, I'm a lifetime environmentalist. You know, my mother worked for Climat Forest Alliance, sued a lot of logging operations over the spotted owl. And so, you know, it's morally, you know, you have my assurance that I will build this enclosure that I'm supposed to when I'm running this generator use is temporary. And, you know, my business plan and my moral plan is to go above and beyond what is required to make sure these protections are set forth. You know, I'm just trying to have a small, family business, you know. And we live in this beautiful place, and these animals exist, hopefully, you know. So you just have my assurance that I will go above and beyond from the moral, and it's part of my business plan to be environmentally conscious. And so I hope you'll approve my project. Thank you.
I have a question of you. Have you approached PG&E and got a cost estimate for what it's going to take to bring power?
Yes, yes.
What is that?
It was fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. They said it would take six months. I don't know if that's accurate or not. And then there's a reason I didn't put solar in there. It's because I wanted to invest my money into PG&E. And then eventually, you know, I reduced my power consumption as small as I could so that I could eventually offset it with solar grid time.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment? Please approach podium.
Good evening. Tara Carver, Executive Director, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. And we strongly advocate that you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close this section of public comment. We'll bring her back to the Commissioners for discussion. Any questions? Any clarification, any discussion? Everyone must be setting their mind. You have a question, Mike?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we find that the Planning Commission is considered the addendum and to the appointed, to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land ordinance, as described by Section fifteen one six four of the State Secret Guidelines, make all the required findings for approval of the special permits and lot line adjustment based on evidence in the staff report and adopt the resolution approving the Skyline Farms LLC special permits and lot line adjustments as recommended by the staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
If I could interject through the chair. I don't, that is not this project, so that's either an error in the agenda or...
Ah.
That was second five, six.
Yeah, the wrong one there. I have the comments here.
There you go.
Do I have to read all the first part of it? Because that's pretty much the same.
No, just the bottom.
Okay. Approval of the special permits based on the evidence in the staff report and adopt the resolution approving Sawtooth Ridge LLC special permits as recommended by staff, subject to recommended conditions.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Is everyone clear on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Project is passed unanimously. And with that, the next item is the continued discussion on the amendment of Humboldt County zoning maps to make them consistent with the two thousand seventeen general plan. And we're going to take a ten-minute recess, and then we'll come back, and that will be the next item for us. Director?
That one is actually continued?
So the, but I see that's a recommendation, but since it's on the agenda, we've already had one person come to speak on it.
Okay, okay. Yep, makes sense.
Are we going to have a brief staff report, and then we'll see who else is here?
We weren't planning on having a staff report, but if there's anybody here who wants to speak to it, we should give them the opportunity.
We'll open it, public comment on it, and see who's here. Thank you. With that, we'll take a ten-minute recess. And we will get this meeting back in session. And the item before us now is the, is the amendment to the Humboldt County zoning maps to be consistent with the two thousand seventeen Humboldt County general plan. This is a continuance item. We've already had one person here that came to speak on this. And so we don't have a staff report. We had a staff report last week, and this is a continuous. But since we've had one party come to speak on this, I will open up the general public comment in case there's others who came to speak on this in confusion. So anyone wishing to speak on this item, please approach podium.
Chair Morris, I appreciate the opportunity. I may not be able to attend the continuance, so this is great. I've spoken before regarding the railroad overlay that you're putting on property. I've spoken against that for many reasons. One of the reasons are that legally, if you're to use that for a purpose of a trail, you are required to compensate the owner for the easement for a trail, not just for a railroad. And to encumber the property with this kind of overlay doesn't make sense to me. Now, here's, here's an interesting thing which some people brought to me, and I'm not an attorney. You could ask Miles there, maybe he has researched that like other people have. But a lot of what you're basing the trail upon is the ability to railbank that. And one of the qualifications you have to have is that has to be connected at this time to the national rail system. The Annie and Mary is a complete separate railroad, and there's no tracks there anymore except over a couple of trestles. They're not even going to be using that for the trail other than through the city of Blue Lake is the only thing I've seen on the plan, because it's not feasible. They have trestles up in the air. You're not going to go way back in the woods and go up in the air to run a trail. So it can't be railbanked. The chances of a railroad coming back there, I would say, pretty well nonexistent from most people's viewpoint. And yet, all of the owners along there that have fee titled property with an easement across their property, some of which says as soon as the railroad quits using this property, it reverts back as far as ownership goes. They used a term back then called abandonment, which isn't the legal term now that's used by the people back in Washington. But functionally, it was meant to quit using it. Some of it said to quit using it for three years in our deeds. So to me, to encumber that section with this overlay is inappropriate. There's no reason for it. I can't see why that would even be considered. I'm speaking for myself. Other landowners have expressed their concern about that. My neighbors, such as Kernan Construction Yard, where that run would run through the middle of there if they ever did try and get a trail, which I don't think would ever happen. So I strongly recommend that you have some research done by your legal staff. In fact, you may even find that the other railroad does not even qualify for railbanking. And that's something that communications with somebody I've known who's been talking back to people in Washington said would be something that would need to be determined. So I think some more research needs to be moved on that particular topic before you move forward with your overlay.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to talk on, speak on this topic? Please approach podium. Seeing none, Director?
Yeah, just like to give you a quick update on...
Let me close public comment. Then I'll close public comment. Now we'll go to Director.
Thank you, sorry. So this has been continued because one of the things the board of supervisors did, really direct staff to do, is to notify all the property owners if they're to be affected by any of the zoning. So we're trying to send out a comprehensive letter to all the property owners, telling them when the Planning Commission meetings will be and when the board meetings aren't expected to be, so that people have a complete set of knowledge in terms of the hearing schedule and what's being proposed. Since that time, the Board of Supervisors has approved two sets of the zoning amendments that were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. And in response to that, this last week, litigation has been filed against those. Part of the request of that litigation is that the county not work on the zoning anymore until additional environmental review is done. So that's a little bit in flux right now.
Okay. Is the, is the county going to agree to that?
We are evaluating vulnerability right now.
Okay. And that's the reason for the continuance?
The continuance was really based upon the need to notify all the property owners. The second item came up subsequent to that. That just happened this last week.
Thank you. Well, this is for continuance before us tonight, and so I don't believe there's any necessary more discussion if we're in the position that the Director says, waiting for some legal litigation and perhaps some notifications to occur. So I think we should probably have a motion for continuance.
Do we have a note to a date uncertain, or...
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue it to a date uncertain.
We have a motion is second for continuance to a date uncertain. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. The item is continued to a date uncertain. The next item is the Solarx Solutions Confidential Use Permit. And that, I believe, we have a request for a continuance by the applicant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But has anyone traveled here a great distance and would not be able to come back and testify or comment at a future meeting on this item? Okay. I suppose we will open up, get a brief report, and then we will see if we can get it continued.
So this is a application for a conditional use permit to permit an existing fourteen thousand two hundred forty-seven square foot mixed light cannabis cultivation with a special permit to work within the streamside management area of the Matul River. In discussions with the applicant, we identified some things that we felt should, that warranted further discussion. And in response to that, they've asked for a continuance. It really is prudent at this point not to try to discuss it until those things are resolved. And so we would strongly recommend a continuance of this.
Okay. All right. Well, based on that, and the fact that no one raised their hand to make a, entertain a public comment on that, we should probably move along to motion on continuance.
I'll sort of move.
Seconded.
We have a motion is second for a continues to a date uncertain. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Project is continued to a date uncertain. And with that, we will move along to the industrial hemp ordinance workshop. This is the second workshop that we've had here before the Commissioners. I think there's been other ones throughout the county. And so I would ask that we give us a brief staff report on that, since we had one last week. But the staff can give us one for the folks attending. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Before Ms. Net begins to, Ms. Adler, sorry, begins to present this, this is actually a public hearing. I do recognize that the agenda says workshop, but this is a public hearing. And it has been noted as a public hearing.
All right. Then based on that, I will scratch that workshop item off my list, and this is a public hearing. It will be an action item. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alana Adler. I am the assigned planner for the industrial hemp ordinance. Tonight, we are going to be having a, holding a public hearing on the revisions to the ordinance. We did have a public workshop on October third, and where we opened up and reviewed the draft ordinance and received some public comment at that time. So tonight, we'll be reviewing the revised ordinance and proposed alternatives. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to summarize our public engagement efforts to date and based on the direction of the Board of Supervisors. And really discuss how the public comment has shaped the draft ordinance that was presented to the Planning Commission and the public. And after reviewing comments, staff has revised the industrial hemp ordinance, and I'll be discussing the revisions that have been made and why. I'll conclude my staff report to allow for public comment and for the Planning Commission to deliberate on the revised ordinance and provide staff direction and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? If not, we will open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please approach podium at this time.
Chair Morris, if we could, we did have more in the presentation to kind of walk through, because we would like to set the stage for why we're presenting an alternative ordinance draft to you tonight. And the thought process that has led to that and all the public comment and everything that kind of frames the issue. And I think it would be helpful for the Commission and for the public to understand the different tensions that are at play here and what we're struggling with.
Okay. I figured that would come up in discussion stage, and go ahead if you got continuance.
Okay. Thank you. So early on, we did, you know, hear a lot of interest from the public about a new agricultural industry, a way to diversify the economy, an ability to grow hemp for medicinal purposes, and to have an opportunity to grow cannabis that's low in THC, high in CBD, and it's not regulated the same way as the cannabis ordinance and may provide for some relief from county taxation and state licensing fees. I think that was a very attractive component of industrial hemp early on. And so the Board directed us to conduct a public outreach effort, prepare an industrial hemp ordinance, and complete our work program prior to the end of the moratorium on industrial hemp, which expires December twenty-fifth. So just kind of, this was a summary that we provided during the last Planning Commission. And I think it's important to kind of highlight some of these public comments, because they really did, did shape our draft ordinance that we presented last time. And so I'll kind of get into, so these are kind of a good summary of the comments we received. And then this is the way that the draft ordinance was really composed that we presented. We had an allowance for a registration-only type of pathway for those who wanted to cultivate hemp in the industrial management zone. These were areas we identified that are in agricultural use now, zoned AE outside of community plan areas, low in the watershed. They seem to be appropriate areas for agricultural use. Kind of another concern that we heard during the workshops was to allow a pathway for the commercial cannabis permit holders to cultivate industrial hemp. So we incorporated that into the draft ordinance with the zoning clearance... So, we incorporated that into the draft ordinance with a zoning clearance certificate. We also included an accessory use provision in the draft ordinance, which would allow for the 5,000 square foot on properties where people resided, and it would essentially be kind of an accessory to their residential use, allow them essentially the easy entry into the marketplace for the smaller grower. For those who wanted to cultivate industrial hemp on a larger scale, we deemed this the primary use, which would essentially have a pathway through the commercial cannabis land use ordinance, and for other things, including indoor retail sales, manufacturing, those kind of activities, we saw that as being appropriate to regulate through the Once we released the draft, we held a couple workshops. We held a workshop here, and we received a public comment back. And we had really strong concerns by cannabis growers that, that some of these components of the draft ordinance may, may potentially cause damage to the existing commercial cannabis industry. One of the biggest concerns we heard was in regard to the large-scale farms that would be allowed through the industrial hemp management zone. And also, there was a concern about the accessory use. Would that really be economically viable? And then, and then really, kind of, the take-home message that we received was, you know, once industrial hemp is allowed in the county, it could compromise the cannabis industry. And once that use is allowed, it's here, you know? So, it's not something that we can, we can change once we, once we allow that. So, what we did was, we attempted to draft an ordinance that expressed the ideals that we heard early, but because federal and state regs affecting hemp and cannabis are very different, it makes it difficult to design a regulatory structure that adequately addresses both fairly. Therefore, the ordinance presented at the Planning Commission workshop did not adequately address the divergent concerns surrounding this issue. As such, we have revised the ordinance, and we feel this is too important of a subject to rush through that may not adequately promote an industrial hemp industry, which can be successful in the national and international scene while also protecting the cannabis industry. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to take a precautionary approach and prohibit cultivation of industrial hemp. We have also included allowances for industrial hemp activities. These allowances include for distribution, retail sale, manufacturing, testing at the permitted sites through the CCLUO for commercial cannabis products. Some of the lessons learned from other communities that allow for outdoor cannabis and outdoor industrial hemp really did not coexist due to the pollen drift, and this was a concern that we, we heard during, during our public workshops and the workshop here at the Planning Commission. So, we've included some, if the decision is made not to pursue a permanent prohibition on industrial hemp cultivation, there are several ideas that are worth added consideration. So, we've included some alternatives here that would allow for industrial hemp cultivation through kind of a different options. So, option one would be to develop a pilot program that would, that can include specific parameters describing the types and locations of industrial hemp that would be allowed, and an appropriate sunset date for that program. Option two would be to essentially determine there's no difference between hemp and cannabis, regulate them in the same manner. Option three would include essentially option two, you know, recognize that hemp and cannabis should be regulated in the same manner, and then with a recommendation to examine the CCLUO to determine if there are regulatory barriers, which preclude the small farmer from entry into the marketplace. So, I just wanted to kind of mention as a bit of housekeeping, for implementation of the alternative number two, the coastal and the inland ordinances present on page 17 and 21 in the staff report, they can be inserted into the ordinance that would implement this alternative, while the other alternatives would be implemented by adding language to the resolution. So, I can probably go pretty quickly through these. What I've kind of presented here is just adding a little bit more information into what some option alternatives could include. Pilot program, some things that we might want to consider, allow hemp cultivation through those that hold a CCLUO permit or are applying for one, and once they are granted that permit, to be able to basically choose if they want to cultivate cannabis or hemp. And that kind of speaks to some of the approach we tried to take in the draft. And maybe identify specific areas within the industrial hemp management zone that seem appropriate and seem like they could be, you know, safer, more, take more caution to ensure that pollen drift isn't as much of an issue, or, you know, require cultivation indoors or under strict performance standards. These alternatives aren't mutually exclusive. More than one may be recommended by the Planning Commission. So, option two, to regulate hemp and cannabis essentially the same, this, this may already exist in our commercial cannabis market today. So, this is something that, you know, really could, could really be incorporated into the CCLUO without too much change to, to the ordinance. This would provide some protections to, the same protections to the environment, level the playing field, and allow for parity for testing, manufacturing, distribution, and sales. Option three, this is, you know, regulating cannabis and hemp equally, but this would provide for a little bit of an examination into the CCLUO to determine if there are barriers that are precluding the small farmers from entry in the marketplace. One of the things that we heard, I think, at almost every public hearing during the Board of Supervisors' moratorium and all our public workshops, was testimony that the small farmers faced too many challenges through the CCLUO permitting process. And really, kind of, the question is, is there a way to reduce those permitting hurdles? And that would be something that we could examine under option three alternative. So, thank you for allowing that presentation, and, you know, if we can help with any questions or any clarity in the staff report, we'd be happy to do so.
Thank you. Any questions by the Commissioners on the staff report? Anyone? Go ahead.
In the recommendation, it says findings for prohibiting.
Make that on discussions. That'd be a discussion item after we get to the public comment. Okay. Yeah, well, okay, I'll wait and do it under. Any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please approach the podium at this time.
Hello, and thank you for that report. I was unable to attend the public meetings before, but I submitted written suggestions. I've spoken on industrial hemp cultivation to the Board of Supervisors previously this year. I'm currently cultivating CBD industrial hemp in another state in Wisconsin to over a dozen farms, over 100 acres, and out of almost 200,000 plants of feminized seed, I've found less than 10 males or hermaphrodites. Those are pollen sources. So, in the draft ordinance, it says just CBD or cannabinoid hemp, not fiber seed. So, in that, you don't want that to be seeded, because it reduces the value of the crop. You grow it similarly to cannabis, that you remove the males or you reduce any amount of pollen that comes through. Also, in that draft ordinance, it says feminized seed and clone only. So, we're really trying to reduce any potential pollen drift into the cannabis farms, which we all value and treasure, what we have here as far as our cannabis culture and our cannabis farms. So, with that language in the draft ordinance, the fear-mongering and paranoia of the cannabis farmers might be something to do with their product, because they have adequate protections underneath that draft ordinance. Honestly, I'm upset, seeing that, under the guise of environmental protection, it's gonna just say no? That's unbelievable. State bill just came out to regulate hemp, I believe it's State Bill 153, about four days ago came out, and it says specifically, under the limitations, that industrial hemp is not to be cultivated on any cannabis-licensed premises. So, that alternative does not work under state law. That's just a, that will not fly. As far as the environmental regulations, if a farmer chose to grow cotton in the bottoms in Ferndale, he wouldn't need a special permit. This is just like that. It's a federally recognized agricultural crop. This is not a drug crop. It's a medicinal herbal crop, right? Some distinction there. As far as the viability of small farms, trimmed pounds, just like cannabis, trimmed industrial hemp pounds, $200 to $500. So, if you have 5,000 square feet, you might get 250 pounds. That's $50,000 of taxable income for that small farmer in their backyard, permissible under the accessory permit. And then, also, there's no pesticides being able to be used in industrial hemp, so for water pollution and those concerns, it's largely all organic, similar to cannabis, that you can't use a registered pesticide, because EPA registrations don't currently include industrial hemp. But, I think that's all, I mean, that's all the time I have. That's not all I have to say. Expect emails from me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Wesley Williford. Bringing mic up, sorry. Hi. So, with the, with the federal legalization of hemp, we will see, we will see the increased interest in genetic modification of hemp, of hemp plants through corporations such as Monsanto or Coke. And one of the concerns that I have in regards to the potential genetic drift is a single farmer purchases seeds to grow plants, and that property, or any seeds, or, excuse me, any pollen that is transferred over into the small cannabis farms becomes, in some cases, it becomes the property of those companies that genetically modify those plants. And so, one of my concerns is through, through potential cross-pollination, farmers, cannabis farmers and cultivators may potentially lose the heavily cultivated and separated genetics that they have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Eric Walls. Thank you guys all for being here tonight and holding this meeting. Just wanted to say I support the moratorium on hemp production for, clearly, this is just a, this is a large ag bill. Said it before, this isn't about, you know, producing the highest quality of this or that. It's just hemp. You know, there's a lot of great farmers in here that I bet could produce really high-quality CBD, but this isn't a bill for them. This is a bill for the big industry to take a chance on another hemp farm somewhere else. And they have hemp farms in other places, they have diversified, you know, investments. This is one of them that may or may not work. I'm sure there's gonna be some people in this county that may be able to get in there, but at what cost? You know, we've, you know, I came up here because I saw clear writing that, you know, Humboldt County wanted to develop a strong, regulated cannabis market. Love it or hate it, I mean, we're here, and I think it's working really well, and that this bill poses a threat, just like everything else that we do, you know, every day, farming, weather, those are obstacles that we have to overcome. This is just one of those things that we're gonna have to deal with, but the way that this is being brought in, I don't think aligns with what you guys have worked for, what the county has worked for, what everybody's strived for over the past 20 years. This would kind of be a large step back, devastating blow, fundamentally crippling the THC market, or just the cannabis market that we have, and everybody who's invested time, you know, a lot of time, would kind of just mean it would, it would ruin it, potentially, right? I think we could do it right. I don't think this is the right bill. I think that the moratorium needs to stand. You know, on a positive note for everybody, it's like, I, you know, I closed on a second farm today. I'm really excited, and it does fill me with a little bit of worry that, hey, this is something that could potentially damage that farm, because it's close to my other farm, which is right off of Fortuna. And I have people who are trusting in me, and I want to do good and continue to do good in the county and have good faith. But if, you know, there's, you know, I'm already having to deal with issues of new pests that are being first recognized up in Washington, Oregon, primarily being derived from the hemp farm, and now those are starting to creep down into Humboldt County. So, pests and all that, you know, those things are real. Pollen drift are real. Firsthand accounts of people, you know, suffering massive losses and taking extreme measures are real. Those things are not made up. I think you guys should definitely take your time, read what's out there, talk to your constituents in other counties before you make a final decision on allowing any kind of hemp-producing Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
Good evening. Thomas Mulder again. I'm gonna try to be quicker. I've spoke numerous times. I think everyone's heard my viewpoints. I support the cautionary approach. I think, like I've stated before, the cannabis industry is something that needs to be supported. It's something that we can sustain and build upon and pass on to future generations. That's something Humboldt needs to stand behind and not have the boom and bust economies. I think this cautionary approach is a good idea. I've seen an option out there for a pilot program possibly, or something like that, maybe a lottery for a small pilot program, whatever you, the ag commissioner feels he could properly oversee without added staff. Maybe that's an idea. If you guys are thinking, hey, let's let hemp in, I would say possibility. I wouldn't be opposed to a pilot program to really, really keep a close eye on it. I would support amending the CCLUO. I've stated that numerous times. I would love to see it amended to allow people to operate under interim permit under ordinance 2.0. I think the Planning Commission, I saw that thing put out by the CAO's office, that they're gonna try to push small farmers through to be able to cultivate next year. I think that's a great thing. I think that's where the economic viability within Humboldt County would be, is getting more people through cannabis permitting. Another thing, if a portion of this equity money, I don't even know how it's possible, but a portion of the equity money that the county just got to buy blocks of time with consultants, I think a lot of people don't know how to get through. If you were able to buy staff time of county employees or a consultant that takes the environment into consideration, buy blocks of time and let people, you know, use up that time to get everything in order to get permitted. I think a lot of it's paperwork, a lot of it's the fear. Some people didn't trust the county, that's why they didn't step forward. I mean, a lot of us that stepped forward early, we were looked upon as outcasts, basically, for stepping across that line. So, remember that before we jump into a whole new industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
I'd like to reiterate what the last Speaker said. I think a pilot program is ideal. It's short-term, you can make the term whatever you want, one season or two seasons, you can adapt to that. I don't support a lottery. I support you having your staff take a DESIC number, you guys pick what it is, 10, 20, whatever, and do the best ones that have the best practices and show the best chance of succeeding. I can understand the worry about, about cross-pollinization and things, but I think there's some misinformation out there. I was at, I attended the meeting, I went out at the area ag thing, and I counted 50 per- and I counted 50 people there and right off the bat, someone took a poll and they said, well, how many people want a moratorium? And the count was either 15 or 16. It was a little bit discrepancy, I can't remember which one you decided upon. But, you know, staff made the count, people had their say. I think it's kind of a split the difference on this one, let some people try it. Some people have testified it's not financially viable. You've had other testimony here, it sounds like for some people it would be viable, but that's not a land use decision. Financial viability is, is someone doing a feasibility thing and they decide whether they want to get into it. I'm just asking you to give them that option, I think a short term program. I think a good share of your alternatives were great alternatives. Incorporate that into one thing, move on with this and allow some people to try. And there's always a learning curve. I did want to point out that at that same meeting, I sat beside one of the better growers here and his crop had been seeded, he'd seeded it from himself, you know, he had, he had some seeds that when it had the plants turned on him to male. And of course, you see the big billboard as you're coming from Arcata to Eureka. It says $25 for referrals and $100 per pound to get rid of your seeds. And so it's not just, it's not just hemp that's seeding things up. The other thing I would point out is that it is being grown in Arcata. There's actually a licensed grower in that area. And I haven't heard any complaints so far. So as far as that technique, and it's not the same as what they're doing up in Oregon where they just let it fly. I don't support cutting loose with it totally through the areas you have out there, the mapping in those large areas, I don't think that's necessary. I think that the regulations in the coastal zone allow it to be grown in existing greenhouses. And I think that's kind of a thing that will minimize your odor control and let some people use that same regulation, work with your same sequoia so you're not having anybody worried about sequoia changes and adapt it some way. And I think staff's capable of putting that together for you with some recommendations. Thank you for my three minutes on this topic.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Tara Carver, Executive Director of the Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Our position remains the same and we strongly oppose the commercial cultivation of hemp. Other activities such as retail, manufacturing and distribution, we are supportive of. We are not supportive of option one, we are not supportive of option two, we are not supportive of option three as presented by staff this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
My name's Pat Keating, I'm a licensed cannabis farmer. And I'd said on our workshop, you know, I'm just concerned about cross pollinization. I'm concerned that once we start this, that if it does go wrong, we can't fix it. And I don't know how you'd fix it. If it starts growing wild, it's gonna, it could possibly stop cannabis cultivation here. I mean, I would make it real difficult, real difficult. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Hannah White. I am a permitted and licensed cannabis farmer in Willow Creek. I am in support of the moratorium of hemp. Let's not produce it here, there's too many risks. We went through the gamut to be able to permit our farm. There are a lot of barriers to entry. A lot of them are in line with, in protecting the environment and I don't really see that addressed here. The plants grow very similarly. We're talking about a difference of cannabinoids. And I don't think that THC is the environmental perpetrator essentially. Just because there's no THC in these plants doesn't mean that they don't have an environmental impact. Just because there isn't pesticides that you can regulatedly spray on these plants doesn't mean that farmers wouldn't spray to protect acres and acres of potential crop loss due to any number of pests that would definitely be affecting hemp production. I'm a farmer, even with best management practices, you're gonna deal with bugs. If you're gonna be dealing with hemp plants on a huge production scale, you're gonna deal with way more plants, way more potential to be able to invite bugs. And, I mean, someone would spray pesticides, I don't know. They drink just as much water as cannabis plants drink. Just because it's growing down in the bottoms or other agricultural areas doesn't mean that that doesn't have an environmental impact, doesn't mean it doesn't have an impact on our watersheds. I think distribution, retail, manufacturing, all those things are great ways to be able to bring the hemp industry into Humboldt County. And I don't think cultivating hemp in Humboldt County is the right thing for our land, for our community, you know. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Matt Nagel from the Willow Creek Cannabis Alliance. Our organization provides over 150 jobs in Willow Creek and pays over $3 million in combined county and state taxes annually. We unanimously recommend a moratorium on hemp in Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tiana Ariaga. I am the VP of Cannabis Sourcing with the second largest manufacturer here in Eureka. We work with over 150 licensed cannabis farms within the Emerald Triangle. And I support the moratorium on hemp greatly. I've worked with a lot of hemp farms across the United States, some of the best at their craft. And I, I love hemp, I am pro hemp, but I'm not pro hemp here in Humboldt County, let alone the Emerald Triangle. It is not fear mongering. There's a real risk to genetics. Pollen drifts very easily and some of the best farms, the most organic, sustainable hemp farms I've seen in the United States on hemp, all across to Vermont, have seeds, have pollen drift, have major pest issues that it's years and years and years of ramifications of trying to fix and trying to allocate resources to fix it. And lost, millions of dollars of losses if your whole crop goes to seed. And it's not an if, even if an experienced farm is taking hemp very, very seriously and pulling all the males out, it still happens. And it's very, very new across the United States and a lot of people are having issues just controlling those adversities. Our county is going for a huge marketing initiative on cannabis here. And there is a lot of focus on that marketing initiative. Why would we do anything to jeopardize all the popular opinion that we can have for cannabis here and the brands that our, our farmers have worked so hard to cultivate for the recognition of Humboldt County and what it's done in genetics? That so many people around the world want our genetics. It, it's insane. We have something so precious and so vital here. And you guys, this, this commission has such a vital role in protecting that. Please consider it very, very gravely and just understand that so much of the future of what this county has is in your hands. So please talk to people, read as much as you can. I'm sure you guys are doing your due diligence and I have faith that you will see the facts and uphold what we need here to keep the value of Humboldt County alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Holly Hayes. I'm a member and owner of Rustic Farms LLC. There's a letter included in the, in your packet here tonight that I wrote. I just want to support the recommendation to prohibit cultivation of hemp at this time. Humboldt County is obviously still working very hard to navigate permitting cannabis. You know, I personally have spent approximately $50,000 permitting one outdoor 5,000 square foot garden. When you start to, to bring a hemp and including it, you know, as the same, the same thing as cannabis, I mean, that's, that's, that's not the truth. Hemp can be grown for seed, hemp can be grown for CBD, hemp can be grown for fiber. There are so many details that need to be addressed and worked out before hemp cultivation should be allowed here in Humboldt County. This is the heart of cannabis historically in our country. You know, we are not here to be fear mongering. It's actually our family farms that are at risk. And, yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, guys, for taking your time to have this discussion. My name is Riley Morrison. I'm a cultivator and licensed cultivator in Willow Creek. I want to second what Holly said. This is, you know, has grave consequences to our family farms. We are family farms of Humboldt County. I want to second also what Tiana has brought up, the value of Humboldt, keeping it alive. You have the opportunity to do the due diligence that is required on such a massive choice of a big ag, basically, coming into a culture that was uniquely ours for decades. I want to bring up a couple of quick points. And one, that this is a land use issue. It needs to be looked at as a land use issue. We already have a land use ordinance that gives us guidelines that we've all worked hard for, you guys have worked hard for. It would be a disservice to not move forward. In that conversation of the definition, I am here to also say that as a small family farmer and licensed cultivator, I do not believe that the cultivation of hemp is a viable option for the longevity of Humboldt County. This is a green rush, it's obvious. The FDA will regulate this within the next 18, maybe 24 months. Everything will change. All the rules that you put in front of us now will change then again. So why would you do something twice? What is the rush? We have a great thing going on, why ruin it? I want to bring up just a quick thing about pests. We have a new pest in this county called the Bang Afid. I'd like to thank Oregon and Washington for that. This Afid is born pregnant and it has three babies or more within it. They reproduce for most part of the season hermaphroditically. They lay eggs over winter, terrifying. Jeff and his department had no clue about this. This is a whole new pest in Humboldt County as of this year. We will see a continual dramatic increase of pathogens, pest resilience. I understand Benjamin was, was saying that you can't use pesticides on a crop because the FDA doesn't have a labeling for hemp. But quite frankly, when you have millions of dollars and hundreds of acres in an investment, I guarantee you that the regular farmer will do what it takes to get that crop to the door. Pest management, chemical pest management will be a reality. Pest, pesticide drift for the communities that are surrounded, that is a reality. We need to talk about that. Don't rush this, let's let, see what the FDA has to say. And, you know, we talked about the ecological impact, let's talk about the social impact here. We're all in this process together. Forwardly think about how this will settle for generations in Humboldt. This is a green rush in a commodity that is, you know, I, for, not even for CBD, this is for fiber, this is an industrial hemp and they're growing smokable CBD. The FDA is gonna rip that apart, in my opinion. Thank you all very much. No hemp in Humboldt.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Jones. My husband and I have Aloha Humboldt. We're also cultivators in Willow Creek. And I would strongly recommend no hemp in Humboldt, no cultivation. I support the manufacturing of hemp and I think that we have a lot of great products that could come out of Humboldt with the use of hemp. But my husband and I, and like so many small farmers, which I'd like to also mention, it's, it's harvest time right now. And I believe that if we didn't have the rain yesterday, you would have a lot more small farmers in here. But we're so bootstrapped that most of the small farmers are working and working really, really hard. And we came forward in 2016 and we put it all out there. You know, a lot of people didn't trust that it was going to be a viable option, that we were going to actually get to grow legal. But we trusted that the, that you would support us. So now that I, I look down the barrel of seeing cross pollination, all of these pests, the Bang Afid is a serious problem for most farmers. And I'm very far removed from many other farms and we grow mostly from seed, mostly do all of our own clones, and we were still just struggling with these Afids. And we don't even know where they came from. It's an environmental thing. So, and beyond that, just the, the precious commodity of the genetics that we have that are heirloom genetics, that are, that are the medicine. The cannabis, the medicine, there's the entourage effect. While the CBD is, is wonderful, the THC is also wonderful. It's the combined whole plant that is really the medicine that we're trying to grow. I'm doing CBD and THC strains on our farm. And I support to just beg you, basically, to not let hemp in here. It would only take very little cross pollination, only a few males that could wipe out mass amounts of genetics that we've just worked so hard through generations to preserve. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Laura Lee Sandamino. I'm also a licensed cultivator. And I just want to appreciate you listening to the concerns of the cannabis farmers in this community. We are supporting our families with our farms. And as everybody has said, everybody has already kind of said it all, so I won't repeat it. But we already have an established land use for cannabis cultivation here. And our farms would be threatened by that hemp cultivation in Humboldt. I get very nervous with public speaking, but thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm a commercial farmer of fruits and vegetables now for over 20 years. I've lived in Humboldt County for 40 years. I want to grow hemp next year. I know a lot of farmers like myself who also want to grow hemp. It will help our bottom line. When the moratorium was down, dozens of people lined up at the ag department to take out permits. These were a lot of everyday farmers. I would say let farmers grow hemp on ag lands away from the hills, the timberlands, and the cannabis growers. Do not, do not require me to get a coastal development permit to grow hemp in the soil and sun. I don't need a permit to, coastal development permit to grow corn. Growing with seed is the most economical and sensible way. Clones are expensive and bring in pests and don't grow as strong. Feminized seeds are also expensive for the small farmer. Go ahead and limit it to the size that cannabis growers are allowed, if you must, as a pilot program. Hemp farmers can remove their males just as well as cannabis farmers can. If I'm growing CBD, I don't need, I don't want males pollinating my females just as much as the cannabis growers are. I voted for this in Prop 64. It was part of the hemp initiative in there. The majority of Californians also voted for this also, as well as the majority of Humboldt County citizens.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Lee Jensen. I'm a biochemist and I didn't really plan on speaking, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. My interest is in the cannabinoids and in the medical applications, development of pharmaceuticals and things like that. I'm not a farmer, so I can't really address some of those issues, but it does seem like they're being exaggerated here. I just want to say that my interest here is cannabinoids. And I don't care, I mean, I don't see a difference in isolating them from cannabis versus hemp. It's simply a legal distinction. And what I see, the advantage of using hemp is that there's a lot less regulation. And I can't see CBD being produced in a commercially viable way under cannabis regulations. It's just, it just adds too much of a burden. The CBD market's gonna be regulated much, much differently. The CBD market's going to be regulated much differently. It makes no sense to me that either that you're allowing something that's not federally sanctioned and banning or considering banning or having a moratorium against something that is federally sanctioned. So you're definitely going against that. I also question whether, and it's a legal, it's a legal question that you might just run by your attorneys. But as I understand it, the idea of having cannabis licensed growers growing the hemp, I think that that's a conflict with state law. Because they're really trying to divide the two. So it's just something to look at. But thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please. Anyone? Seeing none, we will close this section of the public comment. And I think, looking at the clock, knowing that this might be a lengthy discussion, I think we will take a five-minute recess. And when we come back, the matter will be back before the commission for discussion. We'll be back in five minutes. The session tonight, and we just closed the public comment. And it's back before the commissioners for discussion. So commissioners? Any comments with what we've heard?
Well, I don't know. I've heard a lot. I don't understand all this that well. I wish I did a little bit better. But it seems like all we talked about when we started the cannabis ordinances was how we had to protect the Humboldt name. We had to protect, you know, how great what we have here is. I'm not into it. I don't really care about the cannabis. But if it is that important, why would we introduce something that could do this much damage? I have talked to people in Oregon and they've, the stories that we've heard are somewhat true. I think things have been exaggerated maybe a little. But I think that the base, basic idea is that we gotta be cautious of it. It doesn't seem to me that it's, that it's worth the risk for what the financial gain would be, listening to what you can get for the hemp. I know they grow it in other places, but how much do you need? I, I don't know. It just seems like we're, we're looking at sacrificing what we always hear is such a sacred thing. So I think we need to be cautious of that.
I have a legal question. So if there's federally hemp is legal and the state makes it legal, can the county then say, no, you can't do it in the county? Do they have that authority?
It is my understanding that the county does have the authority to pass a moratorium and to decide whether or not to ban hemp.
Can you talk into it? It's in.
Would you like me to repeat?
Please.
Yes.
For the record, yes.
Sorry. It's my understanding that the county does have the authority under state law to pass a moratorium and/or ban hemp production within the county.
Melanie?
Sure. Well, I said pretty much everything I have to say last week. But I do think that the risk in terms of gene flow is so high that it doesn't really justify introducing hemp in our area, given that what, the value of what we have here is really the genetics, now that it's, you know, being grown in many, many places. It seems wise to protect that very valuable niche that we've carved out. There's a lot of scientific literature on this. I've done some work in this area. The downflow, downwind, you can have five times more pollen than upwind, meaning that the five-kilometer recommendation is really, you know, point nine if you're upwind and then much farther if you're downwind. And the, basically, the conclusion is that there's no guarantee, no matter what you do, that you won't have some contamination. So, or what we usually conclude with in ecology is that some level of contamination is to be tolerated. And so for those scientific reasons, I don't see that the risk is worth taking. And then there's the fairness to the other farmers. So the regulations are much less. I do, I do think that our regulations are too strict in some areas for cannabis. But in terms of, for example, herbicide detection levels, the thresholds are much higher for hemp products than they are for traditional cannabis products. And so I would, I would see that as a source of, well, so, social injustice, in a sense, to a lot of the farmers here. Not that we have a lot of jurisdiction over that, but it is something that I think in Humboldt County, we probably want to consider. And at the same time, a lot of people don't want that level of contamination in their products and may not be aware that the thresholds are really low for a hemp product relative to a cannabis product. And then finally, to address some of the concerns of the pro hemp people, I mean, I'm pro hemp too. Lots of great products come from hemp. But if we're not talking about growing it for fiber or seeds and, you know, that's best suited to the, you know, Canadian Prairies or elsewhere anyway, then, you know, why not grow one of the CBD-rich strains of cannabis? And then be afforded the same protections and standards that everyone else has. I do realize that you also have to pay more and go, you know, abide by the stricter regulations. But there are some really great, high CBD strains that are out there. So, yeah. So I'm, I'm not in favor of any of the alternatives. And I'd like to see a moratorium.
Mike?
One of the questions I have is about greenhouse use of hemp as maybe in a pilot project. It's just, I'm just tossing out some thoughts in my brain here. I agree that the Humboldt brand is very important to keep. And, you know, our area is not conducive to growing acres and acres of hemp like it is in other areas of California and the rest of the US. And I do think that we need to look at keeping our brand and the drift away. And, you know, Oregon's not that far away from here and things do drift. My question to staff is, one of the recommendations here is allowing, is prohibiting the cultivation of industrial hemp, but allowing distribution, testing, manufacturing, and sale of industrial hemp through the CCLUO based on evidence in the staff report. Can you talk to me about what that means exactly then? Allowing distribution, testing, manufacturing?
Yes, we've, Michael Richardson with the Planning Department. We've, we've got a lot of cannabis businesses, support businesses, they're called in the ordinance, for instance, take in product in large quantities and package it, test it, package it, and ship it to retail sites elsewhere in the county or in the state. Similar with, similarly with manufacturing, we've got businesses that operate by taking in product and distilling it down into high concentrates of, of product. And, and so the recommendation is to allow those businesses to do the same thing that they do with the cannabis plant, to do it with the hemp plant. And, and I think the question is, is whether or not there's any risk of pollen drift associated with that. And.
And that's part of my question.
Yeah, and frankly, the ag commissioner is probably in a better position to answer that. The thinking from staff's perspective, from planning staff's perspective, is that the product that gets distributed and gets manufactured, at least locally, is, is, has already been high graded. And, and so you're not going to see any potential for pollen drift from the local cannabis businesses. But, you know, hemp is a new product. And I'm not exactly sure that there's, that we can say that there's no risk from allowing distribution, manufacturing of hemp products in terms of pollen, you know, the escape of pollen from those businesses.
And what about any greenhouses? Is there a particular type of greenhouse that would be safe or not?
You know, the, this question was raised at the last workshop. And I said, you know, on the face of it, a greenhouse seems like it would protect against pollen drift. And the ag commissioners seconded that response during the break. And he also said that, you know, there are controls that you could impose on greenhouses that would further eliminate the risk from pollen drift. But again, you're not going to completely eliminate the risk of pollination escaping.
Melanie?
Yeah, just on that issue, I mentioned that last meeting. But, you know, any hemp and cannabis, they're mainly wind pollinated. But you can have animal pollination, so they are to a degree entomophilus. And so when you have that, even if you have them contained in a greenhouse, depending on the vigilance of the pollinator, you can still have gene flow.
Are you talking about flies and stuff or bees coming?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Well, it appears to me that in the last two sessions we've had here, there's just been overwhelming public opposition to, to allow hemp to come into Humboldt County. And we had a fellow last week, our last meeting, I think, believe he was from Oregon. And he, he listed two or three newspaper articles. And then he also had a story about the apple gate. You know, I looked up some of his newspaper articles that he had. He had, there's two of them from the Capital Press and there was one from the Oregonian. And they basically bore out exactly what he was saying about, about pollination. And there's, there was, there's at least two large lawsuits going on in Oregon because of this pollination. And I think Oregon is, is starting to realize that they opened up Pandora's Box. We're three years into our permitting process here in Humboldt County. And, you know, the applicants that are, have either got their permit or are in line, have spent millions of dollars. And I believe the county has taken in millions of dollars in fees, applications, and taxes. And I'd echo some of the comments here of the commissioners that I think what we have here is, is an established, very high-value product. And the situation before us is, do we want to let a relatively low-value product, that is a commodity product, in essence, come in and put at risk our last three years of efforts and energies and money that people have put out? And I don't think that that is a reasonable risk. I don't think it's sensible to put at risk. And I certainly would be, I believe, in favor of the staff's recommendation here of prohibiting the cultivation. And with the other items in their recommendation having to do with the sale, distribution, manufacturing, and testing. I guess my concern would be that in the manufacturing and testing, as long as we are not in a situation that is going to allow green, kind of unprocessed hemp to be brought in, which, which would have the opportunity to bring into the county these pathogens that are going to probably be attached to that type of product. I guess I could perhaps be persuaded to, to go along with that. Then on the other hand, part of me says, if you've got a prohibition, you've got a prohibition. And why take a risk? And so, you know, my, my position is that, that it's a very, very small benefit to risk correlation that we're taking here. And I would, I certainly, I think I would probably be in favor of just a flat outright prohibition period. That's where I stand at. Mike?
Yes, and that's what I was getting towards and trying to find out from Michael there, what that would entail there. And I would be along that same line as to completely prohibit hemp in the county at this point.
It would appear to me that you would have to have ag inspection on, if you are bringing a product out here, what it is, apples, whatever. You can't bring them over the border if there's any kind of possible contamination. So why bring anything in that's not being inspected and not being regulated that could potentially damage your existing crops? I can't bring produce from Oregon, so why would you bring anything else?
Depends on, I guess it would depend on how thorough the inspection process is. I've come through, I've come through the inspection process sometimes.
Yeah.
You don't even slow down. They inspect you at sixty miles an hour. Any other comments, discussions? Everyone got it in their mind where they might want to stand? If so, I think we entertain a motion.
Well, I'd, I'd like to take a stab at the motion. I would like to find that the commission has considered the addendum for the adapted environmental impact report for the commercial cannabis land use ordinance that described by Section 15164 of the State Secret Guidelines, make all the required findings for prohibiting the cultivation and distributing, testing, manufacturing, and sale of industrial hemp through the CCLUO based on evidence in staff report and public testimony. And adopt a resolution recommending the Board of Supervisors approve this zoning ordinance amendment as recommended.
I'll second that.
Question on the motion?
Does, that includes the prohibition of manufacturing, processing, and transportation?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I said.
And I think that, you know, if the maker of the motion doesn't mind, I think that that's probably the, where you would stop it. And because there would be no need to approve zoning ordinances or amendments recommended by staff. So it would be a prohibition on cultivation, testing, distribution, except.
Okay. I, I'm meaningful to that. That's why I was saying, I was taking a stab at it. Just making sure.
So I seconded. Are we repeating it or?
No, we're just not taking out, we're taking out the last part there.
Okay. So, I still second it?
Yeah, he, okay. We have a motion to second. Is everyone clear on the motion? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is unanimously approved to prohibit hemp in the cultivation, distribution, testing, and manufacturing of hemp in Humboldt County. And with that, that is the last item on our agenda, but I might ask the Director, I think you sent us an email, something about future meetings, maybe this might be a time to, to inform the public of what our direction may be?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. The email that I sent you was to confirm that the next Planning Commission hearing date is November 7th, and that meeting will start at 4:00 in the afternoon, and we will go as long as we possibly can, and the subject of that meeting will be the Humboldt Wind Project. And what we plan to do on that project is begin, really, the public hearing, and have an opportunity to give a thorough presentation of the project, give a thorough presentation of the draft environmental impact report, give a thorough presentation of the comments that were received on the draft, and how that has been responded to, and how the project has been refined as a result of the secret process. And, and so, we will present all that, and then I would imagine we will give the applicant a good opportunity to present the things that they are finding important, to present to the commission in addition to what the staff may present, and then allow the commission to ask whatever questions for clarification on that, and then if there's time remaining, and there should be, to really begin the public hearing. It's important to note that at that meeting, we will not have had the final environmental impact report available for a full 10 days for agency review yet, so November 7th can't be an action date on the project. It will be opened on the 7th, but then continued to the 14th. The 14th would be the earliest date that the Planning Commission could take action on it, and we are also looking at the 21st, and, 23rd, thank you. So, 7th, 14th, 23rd, yes. And, and so, each of those meetings will begin at 4:00. We will have a few limited number, less than three, items on the 7th, but we will have nothing else on the 14th or the 23rd.
So...
I'm looking at the calendar here. I think you might have had an error on your email, instead of it being the 23rd, it would be the 21st, which is a Thursday?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at November, it's the 21st, 23rd's a Saturday. So, I think your email was off.
If my email said the 23rd, that was a typo. Yeah, it is the, it is the 7th, 14th, and 21st.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
On the meeting of the 7th?
Yes.
Will the agenda be strictly, totally limited to the Wind Project, or are there other projects that will be?
There's a couple of other projects we need to bring forward to you. There's, one of them has, will take a little bit of time, but we're really trying to limit it.
Okay. Because I think, you know, with a project as large and significant as the Wind Project, we face the dilemma of you either start the project with the wind, and then, once we get public comment, and I'm going to assume there's going to be a tremendous amount of public comment and scrutiny on there, my concern is, where in the process of your meeting, do you stop that with people here who've came and open it up for two or three smaller projects? Or, on the other side, you start out with the two or three, you don't know whether you're going to get down in an hour, or something, public comment gets going, you may be there an hour and a half, so is there any way that we can just devote the 7th to the Wind Project, period?
Yes, we can. We will, we will pull everything else off the agenda, and it seems to me there's one project that I had committed to getting, or, you know what? We can do that. We will just take everything off the 7th, everything off the 14th, everything off the 21st.
Okay. Well, yeah, I don't know whether, yeah, whether...
It would be necessary.
Yeah, would be necessary for the follow-up, but I think at least the first one. I would assume that's where we're going to get the bulk of participation, but I'll ask the commissioners for their, for their input. Is that, is that satisfactory, that on the 7th, we just have 100% wind farm?
7th and the 14th?
Yeah.
Because the 7th is a workshop, can't take action.
Yeah, we can't take action, but I have worked with County Council's office, and we've come to the conclusion that it would be better to just begin the public hearing. We're going to form the legal notice that it's clear, that we're going to open it on the 7th, continue it to the 14th, that no action would be taken before the 14th, because in terms of developing the administrative record, we want to make sure that nothing gets invalidated, because it's called a workshop. It'll all be at the public hearing.
So, the earliest possible time that it would be an action item before us would be the 14th?
Correct.
Okay.
And these are all at 4:00 P.M.?
They start at 4:00 P.M.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's hard to predict. You know, we had some pretty strong interest in some projects in Arcata, and you never know whether it'll be the first week, or the second week, or third week. So, yeah, I mean, if there's like one or two things that are really pressing, I, I don't know if it makes a big difference whether we get those on the 7th or the 14th. I mean, it's hard to predict, you know, how many public comments we'll get, but...
I think, I think this project is so, to me, so monumental for the county. We haven't had one this large, I don't think until, unless we had that boat deal over in Samoa years and years ago. That was the last big huge thing that we had. This is monumental too, so with that.
So, just what the John was saying, Director Ford, on any else, anything else on the 21st could be maybe scheduled at the end with the Wind Project at the first of the meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
Just in case?
Yeah.
If, if there's time.
Right. Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn this meeting of the County Planning Commission.